This program is brought to you by Cable Franchise V's and generous donations from viewers like you.
Committee me, I'm calling to order this meeting at 7:36 PM. I will take a roll call attendance, Mr. Harrington.
Harrington present.
Ms. Lord.
Lord present.
Ms. Spitzer.
Spitzer present.
Mr. Demling.
Demling present.
And McDonald present. Ms. Hall.
All right, seeing the presence of a board, I'll call to order this meeting of the Pelham School Committee at 7:36 PM. And we'll also start with a roll call attendance, Mr. Menino.
Menino here, present.
Ms. Kenny.
Kenny present.
Ms. Barlow.
Barlow present.
And Ms. Dancer.
Dancer present.
Great. And Hall present.
The minutes, the only minutes that were ready for tonight, I shouldn't say only, we've had a lot of meetings. So thank you, Ms., thank you, CLO, that was, we appreciate your service and these meetings have been quite lengthy. But we're Amherst and Pelham minutes, only minutes from August 6th. I know they've been, the others have been coming in through Ms. Figaro from CLO, so thank you, CLO. But those are the ones, so they're, they're not joint meetings. They are, they're specifically a meeting on the 6th, which was the Amherst School Committee, and then one that was the Pelham School Committee.
Sorry.
Um, Spitzer.
I have, I have a minor correction for the Pelham minutes. It's in section 3A, and the word continent should be, I think, contingent.
And I had another for the, for the Amherst minutes on the first page where it says, Ms. Spitzer asked a question about opportunities for outdoor learning, given that all students will be back. It should, it should have read that, at that moment, I think it was like, not all students will be back, because it was part of that phased-in approach. So just add the word "not."
Yeah, there. Edit. Mr. Demling. Mr. Demling.
On August 6th, 2020?
Second. Spitzer, go to Demling.
Uh, Demling, uh?
Harrington, uh?
Mr. Harrington. Ms. Lord.
Lord, aye.
Spitzer, aye.
Ms. Spitzer. And McDonald, aye. Minutes are approved, five to zero.
Okay, are there, thank you, are any other comments or edits to the Pelham minutes from August 6th? No? Oh, yep, go ahead, Ms. Barlow.
Yes, on the part where it says, Ms. Barlow said that the staff worked hard on this program. I believe it's in section three, in the third paragraph down, just there's some wordsmithing in how they would be employed. I think it was asked if they would be employed.
Okay. Thank you. All right, anything else on the Pelham minutes? All right, I'll move to approve the Pelham School Committee minutes from August 6th. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Kenny. All right, we'll do a roll call vote. Ms. Kenny?
Kenny, aye.
Ms. Barlow?
Barlow, aye.
Ms. Dancer?
Dancer, aye.
Mr. Menino?
Menino, aye.
And Hall, aye. Thank you.
Now, we're going to move to public comment. And because of my dicey wifi, I've asked Ms. Hall to, if she could help by playing the, the voice recordings that we've received. I will note, I sent the PDF of the public comment to everybody on the committee earlier this afternoon. And also, it is already posted on the website. And we do have approximately 30 minutes of voice message, public comment, so we'll start with those. And like I said, because of my spotty wifi, I've asked Ms. Hall to help. Is it, is it still spotty, or can folks hear me?
Yeah.
Should?
Yep, I can hear.
Would you like me to try playing from here, or are you, do you feel all set myself?
Oh, I'm, I'm happy to do it, I don't mind.
Okay, why don't, why don't you go forward with that?
Okay, all right, here we go.
Hello, my name is Ginny Hamilton, I'm an Amherst resident and a Crocker Farm parent. And I am calling to support in-person learning as soon as possible in this school year. I'm grateful that you all are relying on public health measures to follow that planning. Our virus numbers are currently low because people in our area are taking this threat seriously. And the social emotional health impacts on our students and their learning are significant. I appreciate the difficulties, the decision, and the situation you all are in, because there are truly no good choices right now. So I think looking at the areas where the least harm is being done, and particularly keeping in mind the needs of families with the fewest resources and kids with the most complicated learning needs is where the priorities need to be. So thank you for your leadership.
Hi, my name is Kristen Samigetti, Pelham, Massachusetts. I'm a mom in the district with a first and second grader. We opted for in-person learning because we felt it was the best choice for our family. And after completing a very difficult and straining three-plus months of kindergarten and first grade remotely, while balancing both of our work schedules with no family to help or childcare options, and facilitating remote learning, we chose in-person learning for this fall. I have to add a side note here that the Pelham School and our teachers were above and beyond amazing during this time, and really understood how to make an impact and connection with the students in the remote environment. However, even with these parameters, it was still a challenge. We became hopeful when the district prioritized in-person learning in a way that was thoughtful and science-based. We understand that there are no perfect answers here, and we struggled upon learning that the APEA was proposing a drastically different plan than the district, because we care immensely for our teachers and respect the inclusion and necessity of their voices. Our hope is that by continuing to work together, a reasonable plan will be put in place by the school committee and the APEA. And while we hope this will include in-person time for our kids, we understand that it does not. My reason for public comment today is to point out one aspect I'm sure you're all aware of, but it's worth highlighting. There are numerous parents who, like myself, filled out the survey and indicated remote or in-person, but are heavily considering pulling their kids out and going to another route if the elementary-age student's remote schedule stands as it is. There are plenty of resources being shared on different learning pods, homeschooling, and more. There are many reasons for the widespread interest in finding a reasonable solution for elementary education this year. And of course, each family has different reasons for pursuing education outside of the district. Different support structures, varying financial situations, but the common theme is that the remote learning schedule proposed is simply not reasonable for young children and families. In a household with two working parents and absolutely no outside childcare or family to support us, we would be forced to choose between keeping our jobs and our kids' education. Want to highlight and make sure that the district is taking into consideration the funds that will be lost due to families seeking a reasonable educational experience for their kids. In a world of so many unknowns, we absolutely know that this bill will not work for our families, as many other working families have highlighted, it will not work for them. We urge you to be realistic on the proposed remote elementary school schedule. Thank you.
Hi, my name's Catherine Moss, and I'm a teacher at Wildwood Elementary School, and I live in Shrewsbury, Mass. And I was just calling with questions about specifics on if we do return in person. What's the plan for if a teacher gets sick? What's the protocol for students if they come in on a bus with another student who's identified as having COVID? We are asking for this specific detailed protocol, and my concern is we're not getting the answers that we need in order to return to school safely. Wildwood classrooms and classrooms have no access to hot water. How are we supposed to help keep the children safe if we don't have the very basics of what we need? So my concerns, and I would like highlighted, is a building that's not yet safe. We want to teach our children, we want to do what our children miss them. But above all, everybody to be safe. Science should be driving these decisions, not desires and wants. At this point, home health really needs to be the top priority. And teachers should not be feeling like we're being forced into a toxic situation, which will then in turn transition to create a very different classroom environment for students. So please, I beg you to reconsider putting students and staff in buildings that are not yet safe. Thank you so much. Then, this is seven seconds.
Hello, my name is Christine Hosenner, I live in Amherst, and I'm the parent of two children, a first grader, an entry first grader and entry fourth grader at Wildwood. I do thank the efforts of all the educators for trying to operate in this incredibly challenging time for everybody. And I eagerly await more details as we grow closer to the start of online classes, and then hopefully as we reach the point for in-person classes. My one request is around how online learning will be served up for our children. As a, as a working parent, and I'm married to another working parent, it is, we're trying to make a priority of our students' education, and we acknowledge that that will require some sacrifice and flexibility on our part with our professional career in this economy that is no small feat, and is certainly an area of tremendous anxiety. However, I'm willing to do it. But my request is that there is a very clearly laid-out, consistent methodology for learning, so that I can schedule my workdays around assisting my children with getting online, so that I can be clear about what their assignments are, and that these things are communicated clearly and consistently. My dream would be be able to, you know, on a Sunday night, that I know what to expect for the next five days. I completely understand that this last spring was an anomaly, and that all of our educators were scrambling in the midst of a forced emergency that required us to go to remote learning. However, I'm really hoping as we push forward, so that we can best organize our lives to support our children's education. Again, this is Christine Hosenner, resident of Amherst and parent of two child, two Wildwood children. Thank you, bye-bye.
My name is Amy Kravitz, I'm calling to make a comment about the upcoming school situation. I have a son in Wildwood Elementary School and is in first grade. I strongly support the opening of school as soon as possible, and do feel that any later than October 1st would be problematic for the young children. I do not imagine that my six-year-old will be able to successfully complete daily remote learning at a screen all day, and without a teacher physically present in the room with him. I also am in a family where both parents are working out of the home, and this is putting a huge financial burden on us to find alternative care for our child with not only care, but someone to do school with him during the day. So again, I strongly support opening of the schools as soon as possible. Thank you.
Hi, I am Heather Sheldon, on behalf of the Board of the Amherst Pelham Special Education Parent Advisory Council. The announcement of the additional two-week delay to the start of in-person learning for all district students, regardless of individual education plans that call for services that can only be meaningfully delivered in person, is greatly disheartening. This delay has serious implications for many of our families who are striving towards the September 16th start date. Virtual learning means no learning for a great many of the students designated to be in Phase One. We have heard union leaders ask for creative solutions, and we want to make sure that the use of our buildings remain on the list of creative solutions. Much effort has been put into making our buildings more robust to the virus, and teachers can control their environment and resources in ways they cannot if asked to provide services in the community or in homes. Schools remain a safe haven for many of our students, and there are significant barriers to providing instruction elsewhere that very well could impact whether a student gets services at all. The union appears to be pushing for no in-person instruction for the foreseeable future. While our comments above are centered on students with significant disabilities, we know that students have a broad spectrum of abilities and all learn in different ways. Just as robust, robust remote learning must be an option this year, in-person learning needs to be an option for all of our students as well, to the greatest extent possible. Thank you.
Hello, my name is Sarah Goff, I'm a resident of Amherst and the parent of two children in the Amherst Regional Public Schools. I'm also a public health professor, MTA member, and a general pediatrician internist. I first want to thank our school committee teachers, staff, and administrators for their hard work in trying to meet the many varied needs of the public school constituency. I'm calling with a comment regarding the conditions the APEA appears to be insisting upon for any form of return to in-person instruction as outlined in the school committee's Office 18 statement. The demands listed in this statement, such as the requirement that there be fewer than one out of 100,000 new cases per week in a five-county region, are not grounded in current data or science. Although I fully understand as an educator and a healthcare professional that COVID can be scary and that there are still unknowns, the virus is much better understood than when we first went into lockdown less than five months ago. It's critical to use the best, most recent data, science, and reason to guide decisions about return to school, not fear. Contrary to the APEA's assertion that students' needs can be met with online learning, a growing body of evidence is showing how ineffective it is compared to in-person learning, and potentially harmful, particularly for students who have the greatest educational needs. The evidence for deleterious effects of remote learning on mental health and other health indicators such as exposure to adverse childhood experiences, which have lifelong negative effects on education and health, are mounting. This is a difficult situation with no easy answers, but I implore the school committee to resist the pressure to make decisions based largely on fear, and to work with the APEA to use the best data and science-driven guidelines available to make decisions about return to school, mitigating risk, and keeping teachers and staff and students safe. We've had five months to prepare for this. I deeply respect and want to protect teachers and staff, but the APEA's proposals disproportionately and unnecessarily place the risk on children who do not have a union to represent them. Thank you.
My name is Nick Speier, I am an Amherst resident and a Four River parent. Our family wholly supports the district stance that getting the youngest learners in the building is of critical importance, because there is no such thing as an effective remote learning program for kindergarten or first grade. Speaking from experience, it just doesn't work. These are critical years for social emotional development, building learning skills, and building confidence, and these kids have already been out for almost six months. We agree with the district stance that returning them to successful learning is a moral complication. We have also been encouraged by the use of the best available information and public health guidance to craft the conservative plan that is based on established public health metrics, and takes all reasonable measures to keep students, teachers, and staff safe while prioritizing effective education. The classroom environments being prepared are far safer than so many other working environments where so many people have been working for the duration of this pandemic. Grocery store workers are encountering far more people with far fewer protective measures than the kindergarten teachers will, but they take precautions and go about their business, and have managed to do so by and large safely throughout this whole pandemic. They have families, they have children in this district, and they're masking up and doing their part to support this community. They are but one example. The list of professions that have continued working with reasonable precautions with outward outcomes is long. Virus transmission is very low in our community. Daylight numbers are low and falling. UMass has rolled out one of the most aggressive testing programs in the country and has found an extremely small number of cases. There have been some scary headlines from around the country, but we are not in an area with high virus transmission, and the plans put forth for reopening are anything but cavalier. We must run our school system on information and not fear and hyperbole. We were extremely disappointed to see a thoughtful reopening plan replaced with a vague, wishy-washy statement with no defined metrics to inform decisions. That does not represent the kind of data-driven decision-making we have come to expect from the committee and the district. The demands of the APEA to be entirely remote until February are unreasonable and completely disregard the well-being of our students. It is shameful to say that kids cannot go back to school in person at all. While every elementary school in this district has sufficient outdoor space, the whole class outside, it's time to get creative and figure it out. Does school district exist to serve students, not their teachers? I encourage the school committee, the district staff, and the APEA to keep that fact at top of mind when coming to a decision on what to do this fall. And please, let our kids go back to school.
Hello, my name is Tina Fercollo, I live in Amherst. I did submit an email to the committee, but I wanted to leave a voice memo of highlights of that email. I have two daughters in the Amherst system, ninth and tenth graders. I'm also a physician in the community who's worked tirelessly over the past five months to care for, test, and educate my parents' patients about COVID-19. I've been extremely frustrated with the lack of information from Amherst school system about fall plans. What little I have learned, I've learned from various emails about news about the metrics to be used for determining when it's safe for schools to reopen and advance their model over the school year. These metrics are far more stringent than other school systems throughout Massachusetts. Particularly our towns, Amherst, Levers, and Pelham, and Shrewsbury, have COVID statistics right now that other states would like to achieve to be able to reopen. What is particularly concerning is the metric for phasing in, which said less than 33% increase from prior week's data on both metrics, even if the results are below the cutoff. This all but guarantees that our high school students will be denied any in-person instruction of any kind during the upcoming school year. We must use metrics that are not extreme outliers and reflect the science and wisdom we've learned over these past five months. As a medical professional in the area, I'm insulted that the Amherst Regional Public School System, school committee, teachers, unions, do not have faith in our students, our families, and our healthcare system. We test, isolate, and contact trace to make sure early COVID is detected and identified in our community. We have the testing capacity. Governor Baker has pledged more testing to schools with positive cases identified within their schools. We have proven that our educational efforts have worked, and that community members know how to keep themselves and others safe from COVID. We have done a great job as a community. Our students deserve the same access to meaningful education as other students throughout our state who are reopening with hybrid systems within the next two weeks. Two weeks. There's growing frustration within our community of parents and caregivers. We highly value education. And we know that without high-level excellence and meaningful education, our children will fall behind, not to mention feel more isolated, unmotivated, and depressed.
Hi, this is Mary Clays, I'm calling in, I submitted a very lengthy public comment. So if anyone wants time to read it, you can email me at thearpunited@gmail.com. It's very hard to see all the public comments, but there should be some public comments from individuals who would like to see more in-person returning to school this fall with proper safety guidelines. So rather than read the letter, I am referring you to feel free to email me if you have any other questions. We support teachers, we support unions, or I, I should say, I do. I'm speaking on behalf of a group of parents who would like to see the safe return for our students' school with proper measures. If you have any questions, you can email me at thearpunited@gmail.com, and it has no affiliation with the school or PGOs. And...
That one got cut off, but that's all there was. So I will go to the next one.
Hi, my name is Kathy Correa. I live in Amherst. And my comment is to please have the teachers consider in-person learning with all the safety matters that we can take. Might two kids go to Crocker Farm, and they are having a hard time staying home. And at this point, in-person learning is possible and safe, according to the data and from all the CDC guidelines. We can still do this with the help from the, the, the community, the families, willing to volunteer, and together we can do this. Thank you.
Hello, this is Stephanie Hochman, I'm a resident of Pelham and a parent of an eighth grader and ninth grader. I would like the school board and the APEA to collaborate and work with its other constituents, students, and parents to get everyone back to learning live instruction, in-person, and eventually remotely, if it's warranted, in the winter. Parents, including myself, my husband, and many others that we've talked to, will volunteer and support teachers and staff to can help set up tents for outdoor learning. We can ride buses to check temperatures and make sure riders have masks and sit six feet apart. We can stand outside school buildings and check temperatures. We can monitor hallways for wearing masks and social distancing compliance. We can make sure each student sanitizes their hands before entering the building and entering every classroom. We can proctor classrooms for teachers who are instructing synchronously from home due to their age or being immunocompromised. We are an educated and innovative community that can find creative solutions to make the in-person live instruction work, so that our students don't fall farther behind. Please collaborate and have our students' best interests at heart. We can be safe and responsible. Our numbers in the community and the low transmission rate prove that. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Matthew Markman, I'm a ninth grader. Now, the test assignments don't always come easily to me, but the questions I ask my teachers, I need to ask them, or I can't really complete the work. Last spring, I was enjoying my second year of Latin, learning geometry, and learning amazing new concepts in English, science, social studies, and math. I can honestly say I enjoyed learning in my classes from my teachers. However, when COVID hit, performance learning was severely diminished. I wasn't learning new material, and I miss the live interactions with teachers in person. I've spent the last five months being very diligent about my interactions. I miss my friends, my coaches, and my teachers. I want everybody to be safe and be responsible, but I do want to be in the class learning like 70% of Massachusetts schools. Here in the Amherst community, we have some of the lowest infection rates in the state, and I strongly believe that we can do our best to keep everybody from getting infected. Please find a way to help me continue to learn in the classroom, or at least through live instruction. Don't let the fear of students not being able to follow the rules keep you from teaching. We will do our part. I hope the school board, the administration, and the teachers will do their best to help me become the college student I strive to be.
Hello, my name is Gina Kaufman, and I live in Amherst. I would like to share comments from me... I would like to share comments from me and my husband Miguel Ringler. We are both members of the MTA, Massachusetts Teachers Association, and we are parents of a special education student at Fort River in Amherst. We are very concerned about the decision to have all students start remotely in September. We want the return to school to be as safe as reasonably possible. However, we feel strongly that the needs of special education students are not being adequately considered with the change of a virtual start for all. While we have the means to hire an in-person tutor for our daughter, others do not. We know from this past spring that our daughter cannot learn online for more than 90 minutes per day, and that is with one-on-one instruction. The longer we delay in-person learning, she and other special education students are going to fall even further behind. We implore the MTA to find a way to bring back special education students and kids in shelters, foster care, and food insecure families as soon as possible. With our experience adopting our daughter from foster care, we know how vulnerable this population is. We ask the school committee to please make every effort to stop the widening of the achievement gap for our most vulnerable students by beginning in-person classes for them on October 1st. Thank you for listening. Gina Kaufman. My number is four one three five four eight six three zero nine.
Okay, and then this is the final voice recording.
My name is Sophie Hyam. I'm in 10th grade at Amherst Regional High School, and I'm reading this as a public comment from the school committee meeting on August 25th. I have sacrificed playing basketball, seeing friends, and traveling over these past six months. High school is a time where people find their identity, find new friends, and discover what they love. I understand the fear and caution that people have. But if we follow the right protocols, I believe you should have one to two days a week at school. A lot of things have happened over these past few months, and conversations over Zoom will not have the same effect as they do in person. As a student, I believe that people are not going to speed up on Zoom when in school I know that more people would be more comfortable to state their views and opinions. I know that students are willing to abide by the rules and protocols. And if we don't even think about going hybrid until November, I'm scared we might not go back for the rest of the year. Thank you.
Okay, that was the last of the recorded comment. Dr. Morris, were you going to do the emailed comment?
I actually have one more voice recording that did not come in through the phone number. It came in through email, so I will try playing that right now.
Okay.
Dear school committee, school staff, and neighbors, I'm speaking today to advocate for in-person learning for all of our children, starting September. Five days a week for children who need it, and at least two days a week for middle and high school. Families and staff should have the choice to do what's best for them. I know that some families are planning to have their children stay home, and that some school staff also need to work from home. And as a teacher myself, I very much it's not that that's an option for my children. Decisions made are not enough careful consideration of the risk of school, like the risk of not being in school. Where people come down on this varies widely in our community. I simply that you keep an open mind and to make decisions based on facts and concrete metrics. Remember that what I and other families are asking for is not for everyone to come to school. Everyone have the option to do so and can make the choice that's best for their children and families. Why have I decided myself that risks are low enough for my own three children to go to school? Well, there are just a handful of COVID cases in the ARPS towns. That's there were nine active COVID cases total in Chutebury, Palom, Leverkusen, and Amherst out of well over 40,000 people. Hampshire County has only 37 cases per 100,000 people, and the percent positivity test rate for the last 14 days is 1.10% for the county. We can eliminate all risk, but in view of the numbers and the extensive safety measures that schools have ready, I strongly believe children should have the option to go to school until the metrics change. Everyone I talk to about this issue gets the academic, social, emotional, even physical safety benefits of being in the school building. I've seen the lack of it in my own children, and I'm worried about the long-term effects of missing yet more time they can't get back. And we also have to remember that COVID may surge again. I don't know what will happen in the fall, but if COVID rates rise and schools have to go fully remote, we could be looking at being out of school for months. For those of us with 12th, excuse me, fourth through 12th grade students, Model 4 doesn't start those kids in school until November, and I don't want to see my kids possibly not being in school at all this year. I know this might sound alarmist, but I do think it's a real possibility. Having something like two days a week in school now would give kids a chance to form relationships with teachers and get the socialization they need. There are many significant risks for being, kids being out of school. And just as I balance the risk of getting in a car accident, what I've been I know we're all in different places. It's difficult. As you, your families, and look forward to more is early ways except for
So that last voice recording. We have
I think Ms. McDonald, I don't think we're able to hear you very clearly at the moment. I'm sorry. So at least I can't make out what you're, what you're saying. I don't know.
I think the names are Ms. to share the You got it. Okay. So, Dr. Morris, if you wouldn't mind sharing your screen to do the, the written public comment.
Yep.
Thank you.
Is that relatively visible? Okay.
Yep.
I haven't done this for a couple meetings, so if I go too slow or too fast, someone's going to let me know.
Okay. So I just want to comment, I know I've got some people texting me that the comments are clear on Channel 15, but people who are live streaming, it's less clear. The comments are on our website, so if you go to our website and click on the School Committee tab in today's meeting, the public comments are all there, so if you are viewing and struggling to make sense or struggling to read because it's blurry, this full document is on the website right now. And I got to see this live on Saturday, which is there's mobile space, mobile classrooms, so to speak. They haven't been used in many years behind Summit Academy at the high school building, and it's been talked about for many years, probably Mr. Sullivan, longest-serving member, can remember when he first got on and they were removed on Saturday. So thanks to all of our Facilities Department for doing all that prep work, for the committee for being involved in the capital planning for that. It's really opened up the outdoor space behind Summit Academy, which was one of our long-term goals. When the school moved there around green space, it's pretty amazing. You know, I saw the before and after, as well as the during, and it was very neat. So I just want to thank everyone, both the committee for financially advocating for that, but also for all the staff who put in time in a very hot summer, getting that all prepped and ready to go. Similarly, last done by this week will be the last of the Wildwood Exterior Door Project. So those of you who have been on the AMR School Committee a while know that this exterior door project has been, I think it's happened over, I know it's happened over several years, and we're getting towards conclusions, so that also feels really good. And I think the last update that's not about the fall is that we just found out today that the middle school VELA program, which is our after-school program, was named exemplary by the licensing agency. And so that's a partnership with us and the Collaborative for Educational Services. So at the state level, it was named exemplary, which means that grant continues, which is great news for our students and our staff and for the middle school and for the collaborative. And we appreciate our partnership with the collaborative on providing high-quality out-of-school time work, out-of-school time opportunities for our students. So just a couple of good news things to share. Again, I'll share more expansively on Fall 2020 update when it's on the agenda item, when we're on that agenda item later in the evening.
Okay, great, thank you. We'll be back to you. All right, Chairs, updates. I do not have an update. Ms. McDonald, I'm assuming probably not tonight for you?
Not tonight, thank you.
Great. All right, School Committee announcements. Any committee members have announcements? Yes, Ms. Lord?
Thank you. I'd like to invite everyone to the School Equity Task Force meeting on September 9th, 6:30. Thanks.
All right, terrific. Thank you. Anyone else? Okay, great. All right, so under new and continuing business, the next item is the Food Service and USDA waiver. So Dr. Morris, I'll go back to you.
Yeah, I'll prompt this. I want to welcome Michael Gallo O'Connell, our Nutrition Director, is joining us tonight so you can share more information. This has been talked about a couple of times in meetings this summer. I think in the Agenda Packet, if those of you have it up or if you're watching online, on pages looks like six and seven was to me a disconcerting letter that was written last week by Sunny Perdue, who is the Secretary of the Department of Agriculture. And there's a lot of legalese in there, but essentially, and Mr. Gallo O'Connell can talk about this in more detail, it doesn't allow for our summer food program, which we started in the spring, so it allowed for 15, 14, something like that, Mr. Gallo O'Connell correctly, food sites within our community to have drop-offs without, that was truly drop-offs, it wasn't checking for who the student was or anything like that. So it's very disappointing because that's been highly successful. We've served, you know, literally thousands of meals through the spring and summer. We did get an extension to cover the first two weeks, given the later start, first two weeks of September. But once school starts, we are not able to continue to do that in the current model. And so it's very disappointing, so I think Michael's going to share a little bit about where we are, you know, what we've done, what are some potential options? I'll talk about a new option that we're starting to explore, and then he can put a finer point on it, and you know, I think then we'll take some questions. But you know, food scarcity has never been a larger issue. I think that it is right now, it will continue to be a large issue in the fall. And so we are doing our best to try to come up with creative solutions to make sure that we can get food for our families. We hear from them all the time in terms of Michael and Dr. Marta Guevara, who's centrally involved in this work as well in terms of the outreach, how critical that has been for families. So I really want to thank Michael and his staff for their incredible work. I mean, I think we started up the second day that we were closed in March. I think it was like the 17th our food service started and expanded. I also want to publicly thank our UMass partners for being huge, huge help with us. But with all that introduction, Mr. Gallo O'Connell, floor is yours.
Great, thanks. Hi, everybody. So I would also like to begin by just recognizing like the hard work of the food service staff and the volunteers that have made like possible for us to operate 15 or all the meal sites that we've been doing and the family center and their help coordinating with the community, helping us find, you know, people that need the meals. So yeah, I'm really grateful for all their help. So I guess I'll begin with a brief history. So as Mike said, we're operating under the Summer Food Program right now. It's federally funded program which allows us to serve free meals during the summer. And like I said, we don't have to track who's taking the meals, anyone who's 18 and under can take the meals. And it's been really successful. You know, we, since school closed, we have been able to provide over 40,000 meals. UMass has been helping us feed a number of our sites, and they've provided meals for about 60,000 people. So together, 300,000 meals that we've been able to get out to people in the community that needed them. So yeah, I'm really proud of everyone, all the hard work they've done to make that happen. So we've been operating a number of meal sites with the help of some waivers from the USDA. And those waiver, like Mike mentioned, Sunny Perdue's letter. So there was some hope that they would continue the summer food program for the 2021 school year, which would allow us to continue operating, like between US and us, it's 15 sites throughout town. The, and in the letter, I mean, it says if they don't have, they require Congress to provide funding for that, I think, basically is what they're saying. So that's not happening. I mean, we still, there's a possibility that there might be universal free lunch funded in the next bill, but that's still up in the air as well. So right now, we've been providing meals for seven days a week. It's been Monday, Wednesday, Friday deliveries. We provide hot meals on Monday, Wednesday, Friday, cold meals for the other days. So it's breakfast and lunch. Reason, the high school is the one kitchen we're using right now, is a compensatory kitchen. And we, transportation providing drivers and vans. So right now, we are using two drivers, two vans to reach all the sites. Volunteers are running the sites for us, so each site, it's pretty quick transaction, so each site is over about 15 to 20 minutes to try and limit the amount of It's pretty quick transactions, so each site is over about fifteen to twenty minutes to try and limit the amount of exposure. To volunteers and people in the community to each other, so. So they drop off the meals. They make their other stops and they come back and pick up the, the totes after about fifteen minutes. And any leftovers that we have that we can't use, we bring them to either via the survival center or to Craig's store. And. So yeah. The UMass helping us initially was a very, was really critical. We, like right when school closed, we didn't know what our demand was going to be. We have nine hundred free and reduced. Eligible students, so. You know, it was going to be, we thought. Somewhere around the number of kids is what we're going to have to try and feed, so. You know, we had a limited staff in the beginning, people were like concerned about. You know, coming into work and, you know, things have kind of normalized a little bit more now, but. You know, there's still a lot of concern from people that will be returning to work in the fall. So. Mike mentioned the, the summer food program has been extended until the, the start of the school year, so it's November or September sixteenth. And then after that, we have to operate under the National School Lunch Program. And they've. They've granted some of the waivers for the National School Lunch Program that. Were active for the summer program. The non-congrat feeding waiver, so we don't have to. To the students, we can feed the kids in, in the classrooms and. And when students, if, if you're picking up at the schools, then they don't have to. Normally they have to eat the meals onsite with a non-congrat waiver, then they can pick up the meals and bring them back to their houses. And parent and guardian pickup is allowed, so. The students start to pick up the meals themselves, they just have to tell us the student's name. Because it's going to be, it's not, right now, it's not free, so. We'll have to identify like which students. Are getting meals and the left me either charged or. You know, their accounts will, you know. Left like register that somehow. So. For the fall. You know, our, our plan is meals in the classrooms there. I mean, I'm not entirely sure about the numbers of kids in each class, like it'll be just the elementary schools. Initially, and then. There'll be prairie learners, I think, in either the middle school or the high school, I'm not sure. Which one yet, but. So. We'll have the kitchens open in each of the elementary schools. And we'll kind of run the program the same way we've been doing our practice in the classroom pilot programs, so. We'll, we'll get an account sheet from the teachers and they'll pack the meals into totes. Which we're getting. Getting a plastic reusable totes. With a clamshell, so. Hoping that that's going to make it easier for the teachers to deal with any messes. When the kids are done, they can just put everything inside the container, plastic wear napkins, milk container, close it up. Put them back in the tote, put it outside and the food service staff will come, bring it back to the kitchen. They'll clean and sanitize the totes. And then I think we're going to, we're going to provide breakfast at the end of the day. For students, since school is starting so late. You know, we want to try and get them the breakfast for the next day, the day before, so. We'll go the same tally sheet from the teachers, we'll bring the totes back to classrooms again, load of breakfast. And when the students are leaving, they'll take their, their breakfast for the next day. Possibly we could do more than one day breakfast. To make it easier, but. Yeah, that's the plan.
Michael, I'm going to, can I interrupt you for one second?
Yeah.
Because you've given an incredible amount of information, which I know is well appreciated by the committee. So I just want to pause for a second, which is. Michael talked a little bit about what we've done, the model that we might have to move to, you know, given the waiver's not extended. And, and that being an onsite pickup with confirmation and if students aren't eligible for free lunch payment. And then a little bit about the in-school model. I want to just transition because I know you'll have a lot of questions to talk a little bit, if it's okay, Michael, about another option that we started exploring in the last couple of days. For fall, particularly for the, for students who are attending school or families who have children attending school virtually. I'll be blunt that we know that having pickups at the school sites is going to be much more challenging for families than having pickups. That is closer to home for many of our families. We know that it's going to, we believe that it will eliminate some families from being able to access our food service program. If they have to come to school each day. You know, especially for families with young children, families who don't have transportation readily available to them. So we're deeply, deeply concerned. I want to thank Doug Slaughter, who came up with a really creative idea that has now been supported by the town. I talked to the town manager this afternoon, as has, and, and, you know, Mr. Gallo O'Connell's been in touch. That, that we could explore using some of the town's COVID funds. Which expire at the end of this calendar year, so I want to be really clear that they do not extend into 2021. To do a self-funded program to maintain at least most of our sites or many of our sites within the community. It would maintain certain aspects of that, the challenge is we would not be being reimbursed for those meals. And we'd have to rely on the town's COVID funds to support those meals. So I think, you know, for our perspective, it's a very generous offer that the town of Amherst is willing to, to provide for us. And we know that that service is desperately needed by families. And I think because of that, the town has been incredibly generous in trying to work with us on that would look like. I don't know if, Michael, you know, I give an overview, if there's anything that you want to add about that one? And then I want to make sure that we're giving, committing a chance to ask questions or follow-ups.
Yeah, before I want to jump back into, like, so. The. The plan for pickups, like we have to have an option for remote learners. So the option is going to be using, I think, three of the schools as pickup sites. The high school, Fort River and Crocker Farm, I think, I think the high school can cover. The geographic area for Wildwood and the middle school, because they're also close. And I think that's probably going to be like an evening pickup option. It'll be a, a drive-through where there, you know, two people, two tables, first person checks which student they are, which school to go to. And then tells the next person how many meals they need. And they deliver the meals next. Station, like Mike said, that's going to leave out a number of people who. Either have a hard time getting to the sites when we're able to have them open or. Won't have, you know, access to a vehicle or a number of other reasons why they won't, won't be able to get to the schools. So, and the pickups would probably be, I think. You know, probably two or three days a week, depending on the demand that we initially saw. If it was, if it was successful, we could, you know, offer to pick up more days, but. The other option I might be talking about when it cares. The CARES Act money from the town. Would let us reach a lot more students, I mean. And in a way, it's competing with ourselves a little bit because those meals, we'd give them for free. And the meals that we're giving out to schools, we'd be reimbursed for, but it's going to be a lot more people that we're feeding. So I, I think that, uh. You know, that's worth the trade-off. So. Yeah, so the, the, we're thinking of running a program like what we're doing right now for the summer food program, so. I'm thinking potentially eight sites that we would operate. And the scheduling might be tricky. You know, if it might not be able to happen during the. School meal period time for the remote learners, it might have to be. Either earlier or later, depending on like, I have to work there with transportation, like what they have available for the drivers and the vans, but. It would be a driver and a volunteer and they would stop at a site for twenty minutes or half an hour, hand out the meals, move on to the next site. So it was. You notify people like, okay, this is happening at these locations, all the meals would be free. We wouldn't have to track anything and. You know, it would be the town that would be funding it, so. You know, it would also help us. Keep more of our food service staff. And to give them more hours over the course of. As we transition from, you know, right in the beginning, we're having more kids as remote learners. And then we gradually trans, you know, transition towards December of a higher percentage of kids in school. Because once we have access to the students when they're in school. Even if it's, if it's one day, then we can, you know, provide them with meals to go. So it'll, it'll be easier for us to like, you know, provide the meals through the school lunch program. So, yeah, as we get closer towards, you know. Full capacity for the schools. The remote program would kind of wind down and we would have, you know. More, more need in the schools for. For the meals, so. So I mean, I think like the December timeline that they have funding available works out pretty well for us. As long as. Things progress like we're hoping for with the phased-in models. Because really it's just until even like that mid-November date where seven through twelve are back one day a week. Once we have the kids, you know, that. Have the more severe need, once we have access to them in the schools, then we'll be able to give them. Meals to take home and even like, you know, get them more information about like. Make sure they know, like, okay, this, this is what the program we're doing and this is when the meals are available and. Yeah, I just think initially, like, is. The start of school until mid-November is going to be, is going to be challenging, making sure that we're getting all the kids. Food that need it.
Yep. Just because I think they're going to have, the committee's going to have questions and. So I want to just give the committee a time, but thank you so much for really thorough explanation of both what's been happening. And then I second your notion of the staff and volunteers who have been doing just incredible amount of work around food scarcity. I mean, think of a hundred thousand meals, I hadn't heard that number before you said it tonight, Michael. And it is kind of shocking because that gets into the numbers that I know mathematically what they mean, but I can't really conceptualize what a hundred thousand meals are. So deep appreciation for your leadership and for the work of, of everyone who's been involved. But I want to just make sure the committee has an opportunity to ask any questions because I think, you know, you and I talk a lot about this and it gets kind of weedy. So I want to make sure the committee, if they have any questions, that we might be able to offer them an opportunity to ask.
All right, great, thank you. Mr. Demling and then Mr. Manino.
Yeah, I mean, I don't have any real questions, just say that I, I think the approach that you have is, is spot on. I'm, I'm just really grateful for the, the town of Amherst, to the town manager and to the town council that has responsibility for overseeing the CARES Act funding. You know, I've read stories of there are some real challenges that some towns have with distributing the CARES Act funds and school districts that don't have enough money. You know, even for their own, for school reopening for CARES Act funds. So the fact that the town is willing to, to go above and beyond to cover this. In addition to everything else that they have to be responsible for, the CARES, CARES Act needs to cover for other town services is incredibly generous. So I just, it's really appreciate the generosity and the forward thinking on the part, part of the town. I think trying to maximize, you know, all of the food meal purchases that we can provide to students. Even if they're there one day a week, any, any interaction we have with a student, you know, that when, if you can maximize the number of take-home. Meals and, and information is, I think that's absolutely spot on. And the fact that we have, we can sort of buy ourselves a little bit of time, that if worst-case scenario, we still don't have any solution at federal level, right, for January. And, 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 and we still have a number of students who are remote who need. Food services in January, then, then what's, then what's going to be approached then? You know, we have about four months to kind of figure it out, right? And so, so what, what is the logistics? What's, what's, how can we get a little more creative about how to get? The meals, if, if, if we can only get the meals that we can be reimbursed for, how do we get that to, to families, you know? You know, we'll have another four months to kind of figure it out this fall. And so I, I think that would be, that would be good, so. I, I like what you're doing, I like the creative thinking, thank you to town of Amherst and thank you for the presentation.
All right, thank you. Mr. Manino.
I'd like to thank Michael for the wonderful work he does and let him know that he personally makes me feel very proud to be able to serve on this committee. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments for Mr. Gallo O'Connell? Yes, Ms. Kenyon.
Sorry, I, I did have one question, so I, I think I heard you say that the summer, summer food program was extended until September sixteenth. Because of later start of school. But some of our, most of our kids won't be back until October, that date got changed a little, so. Will that just be the remote option for everyone at that point? And I also wanted to say, I really appreciate. You working so hard on all this because, you know. Not everybody has enough food all the time and I, I just really appreciate it. And I also wanted to say, I love that the leftovers are being repurposed and going to other people in the community that may not also, also may not have. The same access to food, so I really appreciate that.
I can just, oh, you want to speak to the September sixteen, so October first thing, Michael, or do you want me to, whatever you like?
Yeah, I can, I can jump in there. Yeah, so that, like, they just extended those waivers for the summer food program. A few days ago to extend until September sixteen, because that was the problem we were facing for those first two weeks before school started. Now they've kind of moved it to the second two weeks of October. So it's going to be a meal site pickup. At the schools for that time period. And we'll just, I mean, over the last week or the next couple of weeks at the meal sites, we're going to try to like, get the word out as much as we can that like. Okay, you know, next week, here are the locations where, you know, you can pick up meals, it's going to be at the schools instead. And hopefully we can get my people's, and even if people, you know, if people are like working in, in pods or cohorts, you know. They can come pick up the meals for like their pod or their street or. You know, for a number of people, so. Yeah, it's a, but yeah, it's going to be tricky. It's going to close a window for us, but, you know, we're going to try and do what we can to, to make sure that people still get the meals.
Yes, Ms. Dancer.
Oh, sorry, can I just add one thing?
Yeah, Dr. Morris, then, Ms. Dancer.
I was late to unmute, so there is no accounting for whether districts are in-person, hybrid or remote. As it relates to what happens once school starts, it's the date that the school year starts, the waiver ends. So I just wanted to be clear about that, it's, it's unrelated to the choice of schooling that occurs within a district.
Okay, thank you. Ms. Dancer.
So I wanted to just make sure I have it straight. So with the waivers in place, we've been serving or providing meals for anyone who comes to pick up the meals. We haven't had a checkoff about what school you're in or anything like that, is that correct? And so when those waivers go away, it's going to, and we don't have the town's CARES funds. It's going to be the case that only students enrolled will be able to get the meals? Or will anyone still be able to get the meals?
So. Parents and guardians, to extend of that waiver, so the students don't have to come themselves to, to. Uh parents and guardians to extend of that waiver that so the students don't have to come themselves to to the meal sites so. Parents or guardians can pick up the meals um at the at the school pickup sites. Um but we will at that point have to track um who's getting the meals and then it's gonna have to like. Those numbers have to go back to each individual school and the different districts to like keep those meals with the school um that that student goes to. And it won't be it won't be free meals um so yeah uh so well. That's another part that we'll have to deal with is um. You know I don't know if we'll have a lot of people that uh aren't on free reduced coming to the schools to pick up meals um but if we do. Either we'll have to make sure that we're charging their accounts or um. Possibly deal with money at at the at the pickup site but I'd rather not do that so. Probably discharge the accounts um and then try to deal with it in the future.
Okay thank you.
Any other questions. Okay great thank you so much Mr. Gallo O'Connell that was really helpful I appreciate your work on this. Um okay Dr. Morris did you have anything else before we move on no okay. Um alright so next up are the um policies that we had first discussed um last week so we're. Um as Ms. McDonald explained we do a first read and then come back and revisit um. And Ms. McDonald had emailed those around so I guess going in order the first one was. B E D H which is the public participation um.
Do you like me to display this Ms. Hall.
Oh do you have those I would love that if you could thank you. Um so the public participation that one um there were several changes made based on. The was the natick decision I I think that was yes natick decision and then also the changes for the. Now more acceptable formats in which we will accept public comment um so the version that's up on the screen now is. There were no changes from the one um last week. So this second read is really the same as the first one um and so just wanted to see if folks have more questions. Comments further changes. Uh yes Mr. Manino.
The third read will vote on the policy.
Well that's up to the committees that we could vote tonight if folks are comfortable if there's something if there's any element that needs to be revisited then. We could but if people feel okay with where we are we can vote on these. One or all of them tonight. Yes Ms. Lord.
Um I may be confusing myself from last week but it says mail and email did we. Think that still having the voicemail was um were we gonna keep that included.
Oh it did no we did leave the voice message in there.
Okay maybe.
For yes verbal statement during an in-person meeting a recorded voice voice message or a written email message.
Thank you it's just not in the second paragraph I was confused.
Oh okay understandable. Uh yes Dr. Morris.
Yeah I think the second paragraph is more just a reminder that um that those are public documents. Um so that if you know I I think that's the intent it's actually a really interesting point that Ms. Lord raises whether. Other forms of communication become public documents or public media I guess documents is probably the wrong word. So you know not that it necessarily needs to hold everything up tonight but I think it's it's really actually. Worth thinking about because in my opinion probably all of that becomes public um so you know I wonder if there's. A way you know obviously this is your all decision but to match the language in both sites because I think. We wouldn't want anyone to have the impression that a voice message is not a public. Media um whereas an email is um so I'm glad you found that Ms. Lord.
Yeah that is a good point I mean and as a practical matter the the voicemails come in and are transcribed. So although they're not technically emails there is there is sort of a written version of them um. So yes I.
It's you know just oh Mr. Demling has a hand up I know I'm sorry.
Oh yeah sorry um when I heard Ms. McDonald okay Ms. McDonald and then Mr. Demling go ahead.
Um if you can if you can hear me. I wonder if it's a simple edit in that last sentence of the second paragraph that says. Mail and email sent to the school committee members could just be voicemail mail and email.
I like that that looks sounds good to me Mr. Demling.
Yeah I mean so the uh I guess the the wording isn't all that important to 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 me I I the the only point I was gonna. That occurred to me is that when the voicemail is played during the open meeting it by it by definition becomes part of the public record. Because it's played in the open meeting it's the same uh it's the same um effect as when you you scroll the. The email during the public um public meetings basically anything that happens. Within the bounds of the open meeting becomes part of the public record um I guess the only exception to that is if. If you had so much written email that you didn't you weren't able to scroll it all and the time allotted and the chair decided that. That you're gonna post the overflow somewhere else then then explicitly stating that any email that came in as part was going to be part of the public record. I suppose it's also technically possible that you could get so much voicemail um that you could. That you could commit to posting it somewhere else but you know that would be that would get technically maybe a little challenging so. I get the only point I wanted to make is this as long as you play it during the during the meeting it becomes part of the public record anyway.
Okay yeah and I and I agree with that and I also think that just adding voicemail to that last sentence. Um just makes it even that more much more clear. Any other questions comments on policy B E D H. Okay um. Does anyone feel like making a motion from any committee. Oh wait uh oh so Ms. McDonald I can't do this part I can't do your votes can I. Got a little little trigger happy here um sorry. Would anyone from I'm not taking over um would anyone from Pelham like to make a motion. Oh you're sorry Ms. Kenny go ahead.
Do we have to make those edits first to include voicemail.
I think you can make the motion as amended so with the the you know adding the word voicemail.
Okay so I.
Policy as amended.
I move we accept policy B E D H for public participation at committee meetings. As amended to include voicemails as public comment.
That was a great motion. Seconded by now any further discussion. Alright we'll do a roll call vote uh Ms. Kenny.
Kenny I.
Mr. Manino.
Manino I.
Ms. Barlow.
Barlow I.
Uh Ms. Dancer. Okay I can't well I can see your lips moving I'll count that I think. No I okay we have we have a nodding I and Hall I. Um alright Chair McDonald do you want me to pass this over to you.
Um I will try but I might ask um my uh region vice chair to take over if if uh folks can't hear me can you.
Your region vice chair is having a little trouble with volume.
So why don't we have the Amherst vice chair take the vote for take the motion for the Amherst committee.
Okay um. This is Peter Demling Amherst vice chair uh is there anyone from the Amherst school committee who would like to make a motion.
I move that the Amherst committee approve policy D E D H as amended.
Lord second.
Alright moved by Spitzer seconded by Lord is there any further discussion on the motion for the Amherst school committee. Seeing none we'll move to a roll call votes and I am not as organized to do this alphabetically. I'm just going to go around as I see you and we'll start with Ms. McDonald.
McDonald I.
Uh Ms. Spitzer.
Spitzer I.
Uh Mr. Harrington.
Harrington I.
Ms. Lord.
Lord I.
And Demling I passes five zero. Uh Ms. McDonald do you want me to proceed with the region.
No.
What's that.
Can you hear me or no.
You wanna go for it.
Yep and so I I move to approve policy B E D H for the region um as amended.
Second.
Moved by McDonald's second by was that Spitzer.
Yes.
Yep um roll call vote. Mr. Demling.
Demling I.
Ms. Lord.
Lord I.
Ms. Spitzer.
Spitzer I.
Mr. Sullivan.
Sullivan I.
Mr. Harrington.
Harrington I.
Ms. Kenny.
Any I.
Ms. Dancer. And McDonald's I the motion passes um eight to zero.
Okay great thank you um Dr. Morris would you mind pulling up um E B C supplemental please. If you have it. You are on mute.
Can you say that one again I'm sorry.
E B C supplemental that's the the longer one that covers a bunch of different policies it was the word document.
E B C F A.
Uh we can do that one first.
Okay that one I I'm yeah that'd be easier for me at the moment.
Yeah okay.
In a second.
Um okay so E B C F A is the face coverings policy the only change. Um that we made from the first read last week was that instead of it just going away. Um the school committee would need to vote to rescind this policy when when that's deemed necessary but other than that. Everything in here is um is the same so any any questions comments follow up on E B C F A. Mr. Demling.
Um Dr. Morris did we get Ms. Consolino uh did she happen to take a look at this we'd we'd.
Yeah so I think we looked at it in terms of mass breaks and other things like that um she she's developing her own kind of our local procedures as we would. Based on policy given the proximity of the start of the school year um took a look at something I believe yesterday that she put together uh around this. Um so we feel good moving forward.
Anything else on face covering policy. Um okay I will make a motion from Pelham I move to adopt policy E B C F A on face coverings. Is there a second.
Second.
Alright moved by Hall seconded by Kenny any further discussion. Alright we'll do a roll call vote Ms. Barlow.
Barlow I.
Ms. Kenny.
Kenny I.
Ms. Dancer. Nodding I from Ms. Dancer uh Mr. Manino.
Manino I.
And Hall I. Alright Mr. Demling do you want to do this for Amherst.
Sure um for the Amherst school committee uh is there a motion does anyone want to make a motion for the Amherst school committee. Or I will make a motion um I move to approve policy E B C F A face coverings for the Amherst school committee.
Lord second.
Move by Demling seconded by Lord uh is there any discussion. I guess I'll just make a quick note for the public since this is a topic of active discussion at like kind of the detailed implementation level but. We're discussing policy which is a higher level than the low lower level detailed implementation and I would certainly expect this to come up in periodically in terms of. Um superintendent's update um we had talked about lower level things like um. Masks and gators and that kind of level thing and um as we hear more from our nurse manager and whatnot. Um it's an active detailed level topic I would expect to come up at the fall a lot uh but this is one of those higher level policy. Um guideline documents that's the only sort of framing I would put on that. Any further discussion on um face covering policy. Seeing none uh we'll go roll call vote um Ms. Lord.
Lord I.
Uh Ms. McDonald.
McDonald I.
Ms. Spitzer.
Spitzer I.
Mr. Harrington.
Harrington I.
And Demling I. That is five zero at the Amherst law swing it over to you Ms. McDonald.
Okay I will try uh to. Uh manage for the region um I'll make the motion I move to approve the policy E B C F A face coverings for the region. Is there a second.
Second.
Uh moved by McDonald's second by Spitzer we'll do a roll call vote. Um Ms. Kenny.
Kenny I.
Mr. Harrington.
Harrington I.
Mr. Sullivan.
Sullivan I.
Ms. Spitzer.
Spitzer I.
Ms. Lord.
Lord I.
Mr. Demling.
Demling I.
Ms. Dancer.
Dancer I.
And McDonald's I. The the motion passes eight to zero.
Alright thank you um so then the last one is um. E B C supplemental so this one was the general policy on covid related issues. Um so instead of it being its own standalone policy it just calls out. The covid related changes to existing policies um and. At this one similar to the face coverings um policy the only change we made on this one. Um was to have it we would the school committee would need to vote to rescind this policy um instead of it just any of it going away. Automatically um and and also just to reiterate Mr. Demling's point um oh and there's the. The change highlighted um that these you know as policies they are just more general and there will be a lot more specificity. When it comes to the implementation of the policies at the at the school and district level. Um so any questions comments further edits on um E B C supplemental. Yes Ms. Spitzer.
Sorry I apologize because I wasn't here on on Thursday but. I'm wondering for that first bullet that's promote public safety and safety of students and faculty if we shouldn't also include staff just recognizing that there are people in our. Buildings who aren't. Faculty. Unless that term generally that term is just including teachers. Believe that's there.
You when you think it.
Well can you scroll up to the top.
Okay so just that very first bullet.
Yeah because it just says of students and faculty. I'm sure our intent was everybody in the buildings.
Mm-hmm so it would read of of students faculty and staff. Okay.
That's my suggestion.
Yep, any, anyone have any objections to adding staff there? Okay, great, thank you. Any other questions, comments, edits? Okay, I don't see any. Um, all right, would someone from Pelham like to make a motion on E B C supplemental as amended, adding the word staff?
I'm happy to make a motion for the region.
Yeah, get us going, Ms. Spitzer.
Um, I move that the Regional School Committee approve Policy E B C supplemental, creation of a general interim policy on COVID-related issues as amended.
Second.
Moved by Spitzer, seconded by Harrington. Need further discussion? Seeing none, we'll move to a roll call vote. Ms. Stanser?
Stanser, aye.
Mr. Demling?
Demling, aye.
Ms. Lord?
Lord, aye.
Ms. Spitzer?
Spitzer, aye.
Mr. Sullivan?
Sullivan, aye.
Mr. Harrington?
Harrington, aye.
Ms. Kenny?
Kenny, aye.
And McDonald, aye. The motion passes eight to zero.
All right, thank you. Mr. Demling, you want to take it away for Amherst?
Sure, I move to approve Policy E B C supplemental, creation of a general interim policy on COVID-related issues as amended for the Amherst School Committee.
Second.
Seconded by Spitzer. Is there any further discussion for the Amherst School Committee? Seeing none, we will move to a roll call vote. Uh, Ms. Spitzer?
Spitzer, aye.
Uh, Ms. McDonald?
McDonald, aye.
Uh, Mr. Harrington?
Harrington, aye.
Ms. Lord?
Lord, aye.
And Demling, aye, passes five zero.
All right, thank you. Um, all right, I move to adopt Policy E B C supplemental, creation of a general interim policy on COVID-related issues as amended for the Pelham School Committee. Is there a second?
Second.
I withdraw.
Uh, honestly, you got to do it again. I have no idea who got it first. Let's, all right, Ron, you're the only one unmuted. Is there a second?
Second.
There he goes. Ruined my whole seconded by Manino. Any further discussion? Thank goodness, okay. Uh, roll call vote. Uh, Ms. Stanser?
Stanser, aye.
Ms. Kenny?
Kenny, aye.
Mr. Manino?
Manino, aye.
Ms. Barlow?
Barlow, aye.
And Hall, aye. The motion passes unanimously for Pelham as well. Um, okay, next up is the Fall 2020 update. I will pass things back to you, Dr. Morris.
Sure, so I've kind of, um, two things that I'd like to share, and they're, they're both a little lengthy. I guess that phrase means different things to different people. They're just not like one-sentence ones. But, um, so, uh, the first is just a little update on distance learning. We talked about that recently. I want to thank the APA for working together on agreement that'll guarantee high-quality synchronous instruction for every student every day. Uh, that's something that, you know, uh, we definitely heard the feedback last spring. We did the surveys of families, staff and students, uh, was a huge need, uh, at every grade level, from our youngest students to our, to our graduating seniors, how important that was. Uh, we're now in the process of developing, uh, more formal schedules. We got some feedback from what was presented last time. Um, by Friday, all principals will be sending home draft schedules, at least the kind of, the middle school, high school, they're a little more formed. The elementary, we're taking that feedback in, uh, and will be able to share with families at least blocks of time during the day where, uh, live instruction will occur, because we know that that's really important for families, start time, end time, so they can do some planning. Uh, we'll be then looking and getting feedback from staff at grade level schedules. Um, so about a week later, uh, before Labor Day, we'll have a grade level schedule that'll be more individualized for, for, for students. Um, at the secondary level, we'll be able to share, um, you know, the, the kind of model schedules by Friday. And I think, um, we're looking, in that email, we'll have when student schedules, like student registration process and when actual individual student schedules will be, uh, will be available, uh, which will be a couple of days before the academic year starts, given that they're transitioning, scheduling all the students into new schedules at both the middle school, high school and Summit Academy. Um, I want to be really clear about a couple of things on the elementary side. Uh, one is that, um, there'll be a visual schedule offered for every family. Uh, we know that, uh, for students, we want to build their independence and for students at the elementary level, not just having what we would think of as a schedule as adults, but we want to have a visual schedule to support them, uh, to support their independence. I think the second thing is that there'll be live synchronous instruction every single day, um, across our content areas, our key areas. Um, I think another thing is that it'll be aligned between schools. So the same expectations, you know, for our four elementary schools, we, we hear that feedback. We know that that was not the case last spring and, and we're working hard and we appreciate partnering, again, with our, our association who agrees that we want to make sure that it's a, a better experience for our students. Um, I think, um, there was a, I think some of the, the original schedule had probably too much detail. Like, if we're going to do it again, we probably would put less detail on, because I think, for instance, some people assume there was a transition from an asynchronous lesson to a synchronous follow-up. And really, it would be like, similar to what we just did here, where it could be a video that is shown of a mini lesson, and then very quickly that screen sharing turns off and then the follow-up happens. So we are very conscious for elementary students that we don't want to have a tremendous number of transitions. There will likely be two significant blocks of instruction a day. Uh, there'll be a pretty wide, uh, middle where there's a lunch recess time, and part of that is for teacher prep, teacher collaboration. But part of that actually is the food service piece that, that Mr. Galloway O'Connell talked about before. Uh, because we will, we are planning on having food sites in our community. We need enough time where no elementary school student needs to miss a lesson because they're going out to get food that happened last spring. And we're trying to be much more organized and aligned so that, uh, having access to food doesn't conflict with having access to instruction, you know, and that's our goal. So you're, you're likely seeing, we're working this out with the food service staff this morning, a, a, a long period in the middle of the day for lunch recess and some, um, independent work. Um, we are focused on academic subjects as well as social-emotional learning. Um, and, you know, we're continuing to do that. So by Friday, uh, principals will be emailing out, uh, at least, you know, rough schedules with kind of when blocks of time will happen. Uh, and then a week later, at the elementary level, the full schedule by grade level and probably about the thirteenth or so at the high school summit, a little bit earlier at the middle school, the student schedules be available. But that, the emails will go out by the weekend. We'll have all those details about, here's where we are and here's where you'll get your final schedule, because we know our families are, are interested. Um, another thing that we are doing a little different last year is we'll use Google Classroom for grade three to twelve. Uh, at the K to two level, we're using a program called Seesaw, which is a similar, uh, model to Google Classroom, but it's designed for younger students. So it promotes more independence and more capacity for students to be in charge. You know, for instance, has icons. If you're a student who's an emerging reader, you don't need to read as much to navigate the site. Um, many districts use it actually for all the elementary schools. We're going to do K to two, we feel like at age three, grade three, rather, uh, we're able to use Google Classroom effectively. Um, so, you know, that is something, uh, important. Uh, in addition, for some of the independent work times, we are, we have purchased, uh, with some of our COVID funds, um, reading and math programs, um, that are much more self-sufficient. So instead of kind of families feeling like they need to create additional assignments for some of the independent blocks, uh, these programs have been vetted by our staff. They're high-quality, uh, and easily navigable, uh, navigable, programs that supplement, uh, the in-person learning, you know, at the elementary levels for sure. I think anywhere, we don't want to have six students on screens for six hours that we, you know, especially doing live instruction. But for students who do want to have more, you know, independent work, uh, we want to have that, uh, available, uh, for students. I think, um, uh, another update is that next week or the week after, yeah, next week, uh, starting the thirty-first is when staff report back. That includes teachers and paraeducators. And our, at pre-K to twelve, they'll all have high-quality professional development on distance learning. I think I talked before, we're, we're using GOA, which is, um, which is a school, uh, distance learning school, um, international school that does that. They do professional learning, uh, professional development for schools. I've taken a course, Mr. Sheen's taken a course, all of our elementary principals have taken a course. Uh, we've been incredibly impressed with what we see. I think most valuable, uh, has been that the elementary principals immediately saw the connections around equity about student engagement from their school improvement plan to the professional development they received, which I guess in theory was really about distance learning, but they were able to see the through lines to what our district values as well. Um, so we really were excited to see that, and something that, uh, I was really glad they had an eye to do. It's going to look a little different at the secondary and elementary, but all paraeducators and all professional staff will have a, a lot of professional development next week, uh, to really ground them in best practices in distance learning. Um, you know, the elementaries, uh, will have a two additional sessions, ones about how to humanize online spaces. It's true for, it's important for everyone, but particularly for elementary staff, thinking about how spaces like this can feel a little different than spaces like this, frankly. Uh, for working with young children is really important. And the second is how to transition online or in-person learning or in-person planning to online, uh, education. So we feel really good about the, where we're going. Uh, we're also going to be planning some, uh, family and caregiver professional development as well to support families and caregivers, because it's going to be a mix, uh, to support them in that way. So I think, you know, for families who are advocating for more live instruction, more structure, a daily schedule that's reliable and dependable, um, I think they'll be pleased with what they see in the next two weeks, uh, as those plans get formalized. I think in terms of the professional development, I think people will be pleased with a, a higher quality product, and, and that's on us. Last year was an emergency. Uh, we did a lot of training on the technology and the tools. We did not do as much training on the pedagogy. There just frankly wasn't time, uh, and capacity. It, it, at that point of the pandemic, at this point, we're being much more planful. We have distance learning coaches at the secondary level, at the elementary level. Those are current staff members. We have one in each district, one in Pelham, one in Amherst and one in the region, uh, who part of their job in the fall is going to be to support their colleagues. So we have all the PD we're doing, but we want to have ongoing professional development and support. So these are, these are, um, wonderful, outstanding teachers, uh, who are stepping forward to be able to support their colleagues. So I think the structures are really different, uh, for what we're, how we're able to support staff. Um, I do hear from staff, uh, very frequently, you know, this high engagement and improving their practice. Our summer programs indicated that our staff who, who participated in teaching those programs had a lot higher success rate. And a major focus is continues to be, how do we get students in small groups? Because what we know about online education, uh, and it's right on, you know, GOA's website, is if you have fifteen, twenty students in a room, uh, it means one person like me, in this case, is doing a lot of talking. When you can break that number down, that really endenders broader conversation, much more so than in-person learning. Um, and particularly at the elementary level, not exclusively particularly, we want the majority of our synchronous instruction happening in a small group context. And, and we, we believe that'll make a huge difference from what people, um, how students and families, understood and experienced the spring. Uh, and by no means are these comments meant to indicate that, uh, I don't have a full belief that online education, or excuse me, in-person education, uh, far exceeds online education in terms of the value, uh, for educating for students, for social-emotional functioning. I've said that since June third, or whenever that first presentation was. Nothing has changed my mind on that topic, and we know we're going to have students starting the year and throughout the year, either by choice or by public health, uh, situation, who are going to be in a remote learning environment. And we feel obligated, I feel obligated and dedicated, that it's a markedly different experience than what, what, what our students and families and staff experienced last fall in terms of ongoing support, training, uh, and, and final product in terms of learning, which is why we're all here. So I was a little long-winded, but I did, I, I think it's important for folks to know, um, what we're doing, how we're working. Um, and that we still have work to do, that, you know, I'd love to have a plan that was neat and perfect to present tonight on every detail. And, and, you know, be honest, we're not there, and we're not there because we're trying to be thoughtful, uh, and learning from some places, frankly, that have started this year. Uh, like, you know, a district I spoke to, um, in the southern part of the United States, where they had one hour of synchronous calls for, you know, at the elementary level, every day for every kid in large groups, and, and they're backtracking. Because what they've, what they've found out is, you know, that wasn't an effective mechanism to engage students. So we are trying to be thoughtful in that way, and, and, you know, our principals are working, I met with elementary folks, for instance, secondary folks yesterday, elementary folks yesterday and secondary, uh, yesterday and today. Uh, people are working incredibly hard, um, trying to make the best, uh, situation for our students, trying to understand the developmental differences between, uh, age levels as well. So I, I have one other whole different, um, update to offer on Fall 2020, but that was a mouthful, so I want to, or an earful in your case. So I wanted to stop and, and see if there's any questions on that, and then I can, um, talk a bit about another topic.
All right, sure. Uh, Mr. Manino?
I have two questions. I'm a little dense. Is there going to be in-classroom, um, uh, instruction, uh, on October first?
Yeah, so that, that is our current plan. We do need to continue to negotiate that with the, um, Association. Uh, but actually multiple bargaining units, um, the APA, U F C W and the APA, which is our, our small but, um, still important administrators' union. So those conversations are ongoing, and that would be the aim, um, and that, that's sincerely my hope.
Then my second question is, uh, if for Pelham, if a stu, if there's going to be in-class instruction and a student, uh, opts for distant learning, they will not have a Pelham teacher as an instructor?
So I think we've talked about this in the past meetings, but I don't think maybe I've been clear enough. Um, my understanding from the committees is that, um, there was a comfort level of Amherst, Union Twenty-Sixth, which is the Amherst Elementary Schools and the Pelham Elementary School, uh, working together to make sure all students received high-quality instruction regardless of whether they're in person or virtual. I think for schools like Pelham that have one teacher per grade level, it forces a choice that either, if they weren't collaborating with Amherst, then we have to get into multi, multi-age, multi-grade, oh, yeah, multi-age classrooms, uh, or multi-grade classrooms, which there was not so warm feelings about when we talked about it earlier this summer. Um, so I think that kind of collaboration is really important. We have got our tier-one numbers and we're still analyzing them. There's still a couple, we're still reaching out to families, we're reaching out to. Uh, but even this, one of the meetings this afternoon was looking about, what are our numbers in school? What are our numbers out of school at our four elementary schools? Uh, and how do we guarantee that we have a teacher, uh, from one of those two districts or from Union Twenty-Sixth to support them, uh, in virtual? You know, we're not taking the step that districts, like surrounding districts, neighboring districts are taking, where they're, uh, buying into, uh, online platform that doesn't, that involves teachers that are not on the site. We're guaranteeing it's our teachers' teaching, uh, and that's about as much as I can guarantee for, uh, for that, because otherwise you highlight that, um, you know, I mean, a couple of districts, and I've said this, actually, we've had this conversation, Mr. Manino, that, you know, some districts in the Midwest are coming off like putting a video camera in the back of a room. And, yeah, it just, it, it doesn't make any sense. There was a, a big outcry, uh, made a lot of national news, actually, um, just because it was the plan, they thought it would work, and it just doesn't.
I think Boston is still playing for the camera in the back of the room.
Mr. Demling?
Um, on distance learning, um, so there was a question about, um, minimum amount of synchronous time, uh, for distance learning that might vary per grade. Uh, are, are you able to comment on that at this time, or is that something that you want to wait until future meeting to, to comment on?
Uh, from a student perspective, you mean?
Yeah, um, there've been, there has been question and comment about and concern slash concern about, um, will there be, should there be a minimum amount of synchronous time for students, uh, for synchronous instruction, uh, and, and, and that, that might vary per grade. And, um, and that might be a discussion that's currently happening. I don't, I don't want to get into something that you might not be comfortable.
Oh, no, I'm not. Just wanted to cut the.
Afterwards, but I just, um, didn't know something that you were, could comment on now.
Yeah, absolutely. So the reason I cut the question a little differently is that if we are breaking into small groups, there's going to be a difference between staff synchronous time and student synchronous time. So that's why I asked the, that question to distinguish those two, um, because they're going to be different. So in terms of students, we are looking at a range of, of synchronous times. I think the big thing that, that I feel strongly about and our team does is that every day there's, um, a synchronous component to the kind of three core areas, math literacy and then unit study, uh, as well as one synchronous session that's on social-emotional. Uh, what we find at the elementary level is once you get a little beyond half an hour, that starts getting, in one session, that starts getting to be a little bit of a challenge for students. And, you know, sixth graders better handle longer stretches than first grade students, um, in general. So I think that's probably what, 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 where I am or where we are in terms of sharing. Uh, again, you know, on Friday, we'll share out just kind of general blocks of time. It's also going to range, and the reason I'm, I'm not hedging, but just wanting to be, uh, that it's going to range based on the individual student. So some students, for instance, are going to receive synchronous, um, occupational therapy or speech therapy, um, some special education services, some ELL services, some students may be taking an instrumental music lesson, uh, that would be, that would occur synchronously. So there's some range that isn't just about the grade level span. Some of range is about individual student, um, and, and options they have. Uh, and we also have to talk about specials, because we still are obligated, as we should be, to teach the arts, the computer, right? All those other really important, uh, whole child activities that we value so much in our community. All those other really important whole-child activities that we value so much in our community. So, I mean, I think the short story is you add it up, and you're talking not about minutes, but, you know, you know, beyond an hour, and I think probably considerably so. And again, I think for our vantage point, if we can do that in small groups, we know that our students can manage that a lot better. Once we start doing lots of whole-group lessons, we believe that it will be less effective. So I'll come back probably next week or the week after with a bit more information, but I, hopefully that gives at least enough for now.
Any more questions for Dr. Morris before part two of the Fall 2020 update? All right, Dr. Morris, do you wanna go ahead?
Sure. So last week, on Friday, as you all know, I think I forwarded, Desi, our state governing board put out a set of guidance that requested that educators who are teaching virtually do so from their school building. You know, perhaps bringing their children or others with them if they need to do that. You know, I just wanna say publicly and respectfully, I disagree with that request. I think you just heard me, and I'll say again, I'm deeply committed to virtual teaching being substantially improved since last spring. However, I don't believe mandating a physical location for educators to complete, where mandating a physical location where educators would complete that task correlates with the quality of education that our students will receive. You know, we wanna be committed to opening our school buildings for educators who would like to provide high-quality distance learning from our sites. There's gonna be a lot of good reasons people wanna do that, whether that's technology, having computer with, you know, wired internet access or high-quality Wi-Fi. It may be that, you know, the instructional materials people have. I've heard from some, particularly from some science teachers, that they really value, will value being in their classrooms to do distance learning because of the physical parts that are there, that are hard to simulate in a home environment. But I wanna be clear that, you know, my perspective is, we should not be mandating that they do that. There's so many complications that people are managing. And having all staff have to be in buildings, if you think about all of our staff, not all of our staff have a classroom to go to. Our paraeducators work in classrooms, but they don't have, most of them don't have a classroom of their own. And, you know, it just, it feels respectfully, you know, not something that we would wanna do. And simply put, our focus, our primary focus is on supporting educators with skills and development they need to perform at a high level, not on their physical location. And so, you know, I just wanted to be really clear with the community and with the committee, and then our staff, which I'll follow up in an email tomorrow on this topic, that, you know, our eyes on the prize, our prize is high-quality distance learning. Really, for me, stressing, causing stress on where that happens for staff members, and frankly, causing a significant amount of stress on our custodial crew. And parenting for families who are teaching can be much better done for some in the home environment if they have high-quality access to internet and other supports there. So, you know, while I appreciate Desi's trying to support districts, I think in this case, it created, it created a problem we weren't trying to solve in terms of mandating location. We wanna make sure we're open to that. We know that there are staff members without access to high-quality technology and Wi-Fi. We absolutely wanna open our doors for them if they think that's the best in work environment. But to force people out of their work environment, it creates a logjam of HR issues. There are some families, some staff members who can't return to work, you know, in the environment. It creates layers upon layers of complications, where really we wanna be laser-focused on pedagogy, relationships, and student agency, and not on these kind of other tangential items. So I didn't want it to come as a surprise to the committee or the community or staff, that that's my feelings on the topic. I'll follow up with them in an email tomorrow. But, you know, really, there are incredible number of distractions in our world right now, in schools, in planning, in life. And this is a distraction that is, you know, for us, you know, our administrative team, we don't feel like is actually gonna help promote what we wanna have, which is the best product possible for our kids. We feel like it's actually gonna distract from that focus. So sorry, it's long-winded, but I, this one I was really surprised by, and frankly, a little taken aback by this guidance. And, you know, I just wanted to be really clear on my, how I view that one.
All right, thank you. Any, any questions or anything else for Dr. Morris? Mr. Denning.
Um, so as to that update, thank you for saying that. I mean, I don't think you would probably be surprised if we went around the horn that there's probably a lot of support for that sentiment that you just expressed. I think we've been, I think we've been pretty comfortable pushing back on the state when they have ridiculous ideas about the fall. I mean, just speaking for myself, there should be good reasons for doing what we're doing. And there should be, there should be compelling reasons for the education of students. And if it's not improving the distance learning instruction, then why, why do it, right? So, so thank you for that. I guess, I guess, given the date and given, given the news and given the public comment, I would be remiss if I didn't say, is there anything else that you can share with the public in the community about either the timeline for a final, complete picture of the fall, or any other details you can provide about the fall? If your answer is no, things are still in process, you'll have to wait. I understand. As a representative of the public, it's just my job to ask you. So that's, that's the only reason I ask.
Sure. So I think my response is that we are meeting quite frequently. We being the negotiating team, which includes Ms. Lord, Ms. Kenny, as well as Ms. Cunningham, and Ms. Ortiz. We're meeting frequently with the, with our bargaining units, both in formal negotiation and bargaining sessions. We've had some success breaking into smaller groups, to like work groups, to try to expedite the pace. And that's been really a successful model, including even today, where we had a work group that met to try to expedite the pace. We are aware, I think, I feel awkward speaking for bargaining units, but I think there's a collective feeling that we're trying to work towards resolution as soon as we can, and try to resolve differences as soon as we can. So the answer to your questions, no. And like, I don't have a finite or definite point at which we'll reach resolution, but I do believe that everyone is doing their best to try to work on this as expeditionally, as expeditiously as possible. You know, I know Mr. Harrington is also on negotiating group for UFCW, which is one of our other bargaining groups. I don't know if they have anything to add, or disagreement, which is fine if there's divergent viewpoints, but that's my belief.
Anything else for Dr. Morris? No? Okay. All right, thank you for that. All right, next up is future agenda planning. So I guess I will pose this more as a question. What, I guess, Dr. Morris, or Ms. McDonald, or anyone on the committee, what, what would we need to meet about next? Yeah, Dr. Morris?
So one topic that's region-specific is that athletics. So next week, I'd like to put that on the agenda. Because we are, we're starting in a remote start at the secondary level, it is a school committee vote whether we can have athletics in the fall season. I have touched, Ms. Stewart, our athletic director, and I have been in touch with the Amherst Health Department, as well as Ms. Consolino, about their views on athletics. There are, not all sports are allowed to be played in Massachusetts. For instance, football has been pushed off fall. I think it would start in February, potentially. But there are sports, all except one, volleyball. Our outdoor sports, volleyball is the only indoor sport, and they are, there are modifications to the sports. So I know there's a lot of interest. At least I've received a lot of interest in this particular issue. So that is something that at least the regional school committee would need to come back and potentially take a vote on next week. I know Ms. Stewart could come and update you all on what's happening at the other schools. She meets with the athletic directors locally with some frequency, as well as where we are in terms of coaches and student athletes. But that, that's something that is pressing, that hopefully we could meet, you know, perhaps a week from Tuesday, a week from tonight, excuse me, to move on. I mean, I think there's general fall updates that will continue. So like Mr. Denning's question, both about the schedule, but also about, where are we with an update on, are we closer to kind of resolution? Those two seem like they're topics we need to meet about. Certainly open to any others. I know we will have a policy review of the new Title IX requirements that, you know, our staff have been trained on, but are, some of our harassment policies based on real changes at the federal level will need some adjustment as well. But I'm open to other topics. Those were the ones that seemed, they're on the top of my head.
All right. Any other committee members have topics? Okay. Oh, yeah, Ms. Spitzer.
Well, just that we're gonna need to, related to an item on our agenda, we're starting the superintendent evaluation process, and so I think that needs to be built into the schedule as we move forward for the region in Amherst. I don't know about.
Going, I, on Thursday, Ms. Dancer presented a proposed timeline, and I think we were looking at, two weeks from now would be when, when the submission would be due, from the actual submission of the instrument from committee members would be due in two weeks from now. And then a week after that would be when we would meet at the committee to discuss that. So three weeks from now.
Okay. But so, but still, a meeting next week, though, that would be region-only on athletics, and then potentially a joint portion of that with more general fall updates? Okay. Is there, oh, sorry, go ahead, Dr. Morris?
Nope.
Was there a timeframe for the athletics conversation? Should we try to, oh, wait, no, today's Tuesday, it's not Thursday. So we could, we could do that a week from today? Okay?
Yep.
Okay. Great. All right. Warrant report. I was advised to skip this, given the time. Does anyone have an objection to that? No? Okay. Gifts? There are no gifts, I believe. Right. Okay. I move to adjourn the Pelham School Committee meeting.
Second.
All right, moved by Hall, seconded by Manino. Roll call vote, Ms. Kenny.
Penny, aye.
And Ms. Dancer? Ms. Dancer, it's aye. Ms. Barlow?
Barlow, aye.
Mr. Manino?
Manino, aye.
And Hall, aye. Pelham is adjourned. Peter, do you wanna take care of Amherst? Sorry, Mr. Denning.
They have an item on their agenda.
We, oh, you guys aren't even adjourning. Oh, right, sorry. Okay. Good night. Not to be too jealous.
Great. Can folks hear me? Okay. So yes, we have another, one more item for both the Amherst Committee and the Region Committee, which is the Superintendent Evaluation. And in our packet are the one-pagers prepared by Dr. Morris for each of the, each of the districts on his goals. And Dr. Morris, would you like to give a quick guided tour of the documents, or?
Sure. Yeah, tried to get them on one page, but didn't wanna mess around with the font and make it tiny to literally be on one page. So I went a little over. But the, the, it's the last four pages, I think, of the packet. So the first one is the Amherst Goals. What I chose to do on most of them is have very short text in italics, and then a couple links to the actual artifact documents. The first goal in Amherst was around early childhood education. The second was on the capital plan, which actually just typed out the projects that were completed and which ones are done, done, and which ones are partial, as well as the capital plan document. The third goal is about school improvement plans. We heard an update on Crocker Farms. The other two were scheduled, I think, on the 17th of March, which did not occur, but I think I'm able to describe some of them. The fourth is about Comanant Days and the review. So that is posted, as well as a document about how it was integrated into the entire school environment. And the last one is a wellness goal on LGBTQ plus students and families and vaping education. So you can see some links to some of the work there. Similarly, at the region, you know, the wellness goal included some more topics, like especially mental health. So I included a little more there. The sixth grade, you know, the interim report, which is not fully completed at all, except the executive summary is there. In terms of diversity of staff and HR and PD, I included some links there. And again, strategic planning, much like at the elementary level, was curtailed given the end of the school year. But I tried to give, follow the directives that I heard, or allowances, however you wanna say it, from the school committee, of trying to just focus on pretty small amounts of content for each, given the situation. So hopefully it's efficient. I think if any committee member has any questions about either what they read, or what they didn't read, or, you know, they can definitely be in touch with me individually. But I tried to follow the kind of process that was laid out to support the committee members to complete the evaluation process. And hopefully this matched what we talked about.
Great. I personally actually really, I thought these were really comprehensive one-pagers. Very in-depth. Any comments or questions?
I just, because we've been having ongoing conversations, wanna reiterate, like, I think this looks very useful. So we have two weeks now to independently read through the links. And I just wanna confirm, we voted on the instruments previously. I will ask, I'm assuming Sasha to actually send that instrument out to the full committees. And then she'll be emailing us. I just wanted to confirm that, because this is the first time I've been in this role.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Oh, go ahead, I'm sorry.
Yeah, that, that's, you're exactly right. So we'll just ask Sasha to email the instrument out to each committee member for each district of which they're a member. And to wait with the due date of two weeks from tonight, whatever that date is. September something.
The eighth.
Thank you. Any other questions? None? Okay. Great.
Can I make a motion? All right, is it? I move to adjourn the Amherst School Committee.
Lord, second.
Moved by Spitzer, seconded by Lord. There's no discussion on that. Mr. Denning?
Denning, aye.
Ms. Lord?
Lord, aye.
Mr. Harrington?
Harrington, aye.
Ms. Spitzer?
Spitzer, aye.
And McDonald, aye.
The Amherst Committee is adjourned. Mr. Denning?
Move to adjourn the Amherst Pelham Regional School Committee.
Again.
By Denning, seconded by Dancer, I believe.
Kenny.
Penny.
Penny, sorry, thank you. Moved by Denning, seconded by Kenny, and there is no discussion. Mr. Denning?
Denning, aye.
Ms. Lord?
Lord, aye.
Mr. Harrington?
Harrington, aye.
Ms. Kenny?
Penny, aye.
Ms. Spitzer?
Spitzer, aye.
Ms. Dancer?
Dancer, aye. And I wanna apologize for my in-and-out on the audio tonight. I've been using the phone, and after a while, it decides it doesn't wanna do it anymore, so. I apologize.
No need. I'm the biggest coupler. Mr. Sullivan?
Sullivan, aye.
And McDonald, aye. The region is adjourned. And thank you, everybody, for stepping in and helping tonight.
Night, enjoy your vacation.
Take care.